I call the order to July 23 regular business meeting of City Council. Vice Mayor Henderson, would you please pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd remind those in attendance that if they wish to speak during the citizen comment period of this evening, if one of the public hearings, that they must sign up in the back of the room on the back table of council chambers. A first item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There is some discussion, I think, this evening. I know that some citizens had raised the question about the proffer for the Waynesboro Place, I want to use the right words there, the Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development Proffer Amendment, and the question about taking it off the agenda this evening and concern about how that proceeds. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, council members or staff, is that part of what we're doing is getting ready to apply for a grant for improvements to the intersection. And if there is a proffer pending, then that grant will be rejected, and that that grant application process has to be done by August the 1st. So we are sort of up against that deadline. As the proffer stands, again, recalling the conversations we had last time, the current traffic flow does not trigger the proffer. So we are not in a place where we anticipate that that, those improvements would be made in the near term, so that we're up against the possibility of getting something done in the fairly near term versus not having anything sort of planned and losing the opportunity to apply for that, the grant. So I understand that there is some concern, but I think that it's appropriate to go ahead and move forward so that we can get that, that grant applied for.
Great. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number three on the agenda this evening is matters from city council members. Anything, anyone have anything to share this evening?
I would share that Mr. Henderson and I, Vice Mayor Henderson and I, attended the Virginia Municipal League Conference for New City Government Officials, and it was very, I think, appropriate and effective, and I know that I learned a lot.
It was.
Looking forward to using those skills that they gave us.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Yeah, I would add too that Mr. Hamp and I joined colleagues in Richmond on Thursday, again with the Virginia Municipal League, where he served on the-
General Laws.
-General Laws Committee, and I served on the Human Development Education Committee, and had a very good conversation with some counterparts, council members across the state, and about lobbying, essentially lobbying agendas for Virginia localities moving into, it's hard to believe, but the next general assembly session in January. So very productive, and the afternoon sat in on the community development, Mr. Hamp sat on the community development session, and then I sat in on the finance session, which was really, really interesting and, and cool, so. Anything else? All right, number four is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution pertaining to the 2018 Annual Action Plan, and adopting a resolution approving entitlement community annual action plan for 2018, and authorizing the city manager to submit the AAP to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you may recall at your previous meeting, we had a presentation, held a public hearing to solicit public input on the community development block grant annual action plan for fiscal year 2018. Just to recap briefly, that the city has been an entitlement community since 2013. Entitlement communities receive a direct allocation from HUD on an annual basis based on a formula of need. This year, the city will receive a little more than $193,000, and in the previous years, we've generally received anywhere from about $175,000 to this year, $193,000. This is in contrast to the program where communities compete for community development block grants through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The city had been a recipient of competitive block grants in the past. I think there was a question raised as to whether we're better off as an entitlement community or to compete essentially for block grants. I think that would be certainly a good discussion to have prior to next year's allocation. There is a system for essentially stepping out of the entitlement grant community and making yourself eligible for competitive grants, and I would say there are advantages and disadvantages to either approach to be discussed. But nonetheless, we are currently an entitlement community. Again, by way of recap, this year we will receive a bit more than $193,000 in CDBG funds. These funds are meant to be used to benefit low and moderate income people through various methods, means of improving affordable housing, improving the nature of neighborhoods, improving economic development opportunities for LMI individuals. We can also use these funds in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, in that that would be, for instance, a downtown commercial project. We certainly use the funds in the downtown area. And then finally, you can use these funds to meet needs having particular urgency, and typically, this would apply to disaster relief, that in the aftermath of a flood, for instance, you might utilize your CDBG funds for repair and restoration of public services. The map that I'm displaying is, and shows the low to moderate income neighborhoods of the community. Those areas in the darker red shade are LMI neighborhoods. I think we also had a question from the mayor at the last meeting as to whether or not we thought perhaps a competitive grant could be applied to Sunset Park. Sunset Park is in an LMI area. I had said that for several different reasons, I didn't think it would be an appropriate application, but nonetheless, I went back and talked to folks at the RHA, and they tended to agree, and the challenge there is simply that Sunset Park, as it's been conceived, would be a park that would benefit citizens throughout the community and also in the region generally, and which would be different if you had, say, a neighborhood or a pocket park in an LMI neighborhood. And so the benefit is essentially, at least in the RHA view, and they felt in HUD's view, too broad. Likewise, we've talked to the RHA and HUD about using some of our funds to improve the Rosenwald facility, and generally, the feedback has been, well, it's a community center, anybody can, can go there, it's not, really wouldn't meet the strict definition of a neighborhood center. That the way the program works, that we can utilize up to 20% of the funds for administrative or personnel cost, and in our current arrangement, the Waynesboro Redevelopment Housing Authority administers this grant for us, and so they receive 20%, and then of the non-administrative expenditures, a maximum of 30%, and this year's funding, about $46,000, can be applied towards downtown projects or those areas designated by council as some are blighted. And then finally, 70% of the non-administrative expenditures must benefit those LMI neighborhoods The staff this year is proposing that we would provide the 20% administrative expenditure fee to the RHA, and that's a bit more than $38,000. And then of the 70% to benefit LMI neighborhoods or individuals, we have two stormwater projects proposed. I'll show you a little more detail on these projects in just a moment. And then we have listed a set of projects in the Port Republic Road neighborhood that are various types of revitalization projects. And I think we came to this, in part, this year, and as we've talked in past years as well, that we wanted to try to focus more in a single area to make some visible impact in, in a specific neighborhood. Port Republic Road presents itself, I think, as a good candidate for a number of reasons, and which, again, I'll discuss in a second. And then 30% of the, roughly of the, this year's funds, about $43,000, are proposed to go for a couple of downtown projects. The first stormwater project is in the Winchester Road, North Elkin Avenue area that is meant simply to correct a small drainage problem that currently water drains in this direction from the Winchester Road area and crosses into this neighborhood and floods these yards. And so the, the project essentially is to install a curb and gutter system along North Elkin Avenue and then have a discharge into East Main Street. And that's about a $15,000 project. Another project that was originally identified in the 2006 Stormwater CIP is the Faber Avenue Project. Faber Avenue is right up here. This is Shenandoah Heights. This is the, this location is where the Department of Social Services here in Waynesboro is located. And so that, as we've looked at it more recently, we're calling for a more comprehensive project that would install some sort of a detention facility, probably a small BMP here. Water is essentially moving in this direction and floods the down slope neighborhoods, and so then there would be a couple of what we call regenerative channels, those are vegetated channels, and then some stormwater piping under the road here. And again, that's about a $15,000 project as currently conceived. As I mentioned, we were identifying several projects in the Port Republic Road neighborhood. Port Republic Road neighborhood is on the National and State Registers of Historic Places. It is Waynesboro's oldest intact neighborhood, and it coalesced as a community in about 1870, just after the Civil War, where formerly enslaved individuals moved here to work in nearby industries and on the railroad. The African-American residents constructed most of the buildings here between the mid-19th and mid-20th century, and so there's a number of, you know, structures that are of importance, I think. The city owns Fairview Cemetery, which is still an operational cemetery in the neighborhood, and we've proposed really a slate of improvement projects here that total about $52,000. One would be to improve the entrance to the neighbor, to the cemetery, create some parking along the street. There's very little parking, it's a fairly narrow street, so we'd like to provide a little more parking to the cemetery. And then as well, there are just some basic improvements. This is the, the entrance road that generally is used by a hearse when there is a funeral here, and we'd like to clean this up and repave it. And then, as you can see, along the edges of the cemetery, there's somewhat a dilapidated fence and vegetation is, you know, overtaking some of the gravestones along the boundary. So as I say, we would install as well some handrails along the concrete steps and maybe some more formal ceremonial entrance at the top of the steps off Port Republic Road, parking, better access, and then cleaning up the fence line and probably replacing that fence. This is the John Kraus House. It's circa about 1820 or so. John Kraus was a farmer who owned most of the property that is the Port Republic Road neighborhood, and he had a small mill along the South River, and this is, is his house. It's currently privately owned. It is also, bless you, it is also along the South River Greenway, the extension that will go from the current terminus north to North Park. And so the idea is to, to secure the property some, a bit better than it currently is, and then to replace some fencing, to provide some interpretive signage. Our hope would be, one, to both stabilize the structure, help stabilize the structure, and also to try to discourage trespass and vandalism along the Greenway. I think as well, it's, it's an interesting structure, interesting history, and I think it would provide an opportunity for some examination of local history along the Greenway. We propose a $10,000 expenditure for this project, and again, this is privately held. And then finally, in the Port Republic Road neighborhood, there's an area off of Elkton Street, that this is Port Republic Road. Elkton Street is a small, narrow street that comes off of Port Republic Road, and there are several houses along Elkton, but this is, this area has become something of a property maintenance challenge. We have directed the demolition, or accomplished the demolition of one house that stood about here. At present, they're, what, what we would like to propose is a general cleanup of this area to try to discourage some vagrancy that occurs there now, and then some modest public improvements. We've had conversation with a nonprofit housing group that has interest in perhaps developing several houses at the end of Elkton Street there, that the, the cost of public improvements there are fairly extensive, and at present, we just haven't really been able to work out a program to pursue the construction of those housing, those houses. But I think between now and next year, we'd like to continue to have that conversation with the nonprofit. But at present, what we're trying to do is set the stage perhaps for something like that to happen.
And that is currently city-held property?
No, sir. There's a narrow right of way there, but it's all privately-held property. Turning our attention to a couple of downtown projects, the first is a proposed improvement to the Market Avenue Parking Lot. This is a city-owned parking lot in the, the blue area here that's adjacent to the Kroger's Parking Lot. This is the Kroger Store. These are the gas fueling stations at Kroger, Police Department, Waynesboro's Police Department's over here, Arch Avenue and Market. So our proposal would be simply to try to clean up the parking lot through the installation of street trees and some landscaping, probably new lighting, and much as we cleaned up the municipal parking lots here just to the west of us, beside the Wayne Theater and across Main Street. And that's a, we've slated that as about a $33,000 project. And then finally, we're proposing a $10,000 facade grant for the Shendure Valley Arts Center's new building here on West Main Street, just down the block. The Arts Centers will continue to have their storefront on Wayne Avenue, out on South Wayne, but they've purchased this building to create some more studio space and educational space, and so they're endeavoring to raise funds and work on the building, and we'd like to help them in, in their endeavor. So this is the building essentially as it stands now, and this is the proposal from Fraser Associates Architects. Fraser Associates Architects are the designated Virginia Main Street architect. They specialize in historic preservation, and so what they're proposing is either to return to some of the historic features or to install windows, a new transom, new doorway, new, these are glass block, glass, black, glass block tile that's more in keeping with the character of the, the structure's original architecture and design. And that's a $10,000 grant for a project that, you know, as I say, is, is matching investments that the Arts Center is making there. And that concludes the staff's proposal for this year's annual action plan. Be glad to answer any questions that the council may have prior to public hearing.
For the program administration, what all does that cover as far as administering the grant, and whether or not the position was created just for the administration of the grant?
I'll start from the first question backwards. Now, that the individual that does the grant administration is Tom Carlson, is an urban planner who works for the Redevelopment Housing Authority, and he has worked on the administration of all of the three previous competitive block grants with, along, in tandem with city staff. But typically, the administration has to do with, one, the assistance in helping formulate and develop budgets for the projects themselves, and then to vet those projects with HUD. In this program, we go directly to the federal government, and then the, all of the paperwork that goes with demonstrating to the federal government that the funds were appropriately used. So in other words, as we work through projects, because there are federal funds involved, there are a number of requirements in the areas of purchasing and procurement, and as well as any labor that's used in the execution of a federal project, anything that would have to do then also with accumulating all of the expenditure invoices and other demonstration, adequate demonstration of, you know, of expenses and forwarding that to HUD. And then finally, there is annual reporting that goes to HUD, and then an annual review that, that HUD does, and there are primary contact. So I would say that there's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 800 hours in a year's time that goes into, to the administration of a program like this.
Thank you.
Is there a requirement when you give these grants out that the property owners have to do some work or something themselves also, or is it just-
Not necessarily. In some cases, that, that does occur, that you've got a cooperative effort, you know, the Arts Center is a good example, where they're going to put in more than $10,000 in that property. We've done a number of housing rehab projects where there really was not, that the, the folks qualified because of their income status, or that they had handicap or other disabilities, or they were elderly. In some cases, properties were identified because they were a property maintenance problem, and we looked at the situation and said that, felt that, that the, the people that own the property wanted to do the right thing, but they simply didn't have the resources to do the, the work that would be required to maintain their properties. So the short answer is no, there is not a requirement that the owners participate, that there, there certainly are a number of requirements to demonstrate their eligibility to be in the program as recipients.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we will hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there any additional questions from members of council? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution approving the 2018 Annual Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to follow the plan?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Allen, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So unanimous there. Next is a public hearing. Item five is to conduct a public hearing on the application of Mr. Giovanni Hernandez for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxi service. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. Mr. Giovanni Castro Hernandez has made application to the city in accordance with Article 2, Section 94-42 of the City Code for a certificate of public convenience and need to operate a taxier vehicle for a higher service in the city, intends to do business as GCH Taxi Service. The purpose of the application process is to ensure the safety of the public and to assess the need for convenience of and benefit to the community of the proposed service. The chief of police has reviewed the application and does not object to its approval by city council. So this evening, we'll conduct a public hearing and offer the public the opportunity to speak to either the need or suitability of the applicant to conduct the business. This evening, though, I will ask council to suspend action on the application, pending some additional work with the applicant concerning the situs of his stand and garage. Presently, the application indicates a proposed location that is, does not conform with our zoning ordinance, so we've communicated to Mr. Hernandez the need to work with him to potentially identify a site that does comply with the zoning ordinance. So if the council will conduct the hearing this evening, position itself to make an informed opinion at some point in the future about the need in the community and the applicant's suitability or qualification to furnish the need, we'll bring that item back to you when we work through the situs of the stand and garage.
Great, thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Great. I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak. The applicant is here. It's not necessary for the applicant to speak, but if you wish to address council, you may at this time.
Okay. No worries. With that, I will close the public hearing. Any additional, any questions from council members? Okay, so we'll defer action on that, but thank you for, for being here this evening. Number six, resolutions in support of the city's smart scale transportation project applications to VDOT. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Several years ago, the General Assembly passed a legislation that established the smart-scale program as a means of funding transportation projects in the Commonwealth. And the idea with smart-scale is, one, that there is a matrix or a criteria of grading applications to the program, and that it essentially substitutes for the old six-year improvement plan. In fact, there's still a six-year improvement plan, but in the past, you could apply to be in the six-year improvement plan, and you could get in, in the program, but there might not be funding identified for your project. And so, consequently, what could occur is that your project took much longer, and we had the experience here in Waynesboro, than six years to accumulate adequate funding. So, the idea with smart-scale, one, is that there was more rigor in, in evaluating the, the projects that folks applied for. And then, two, that if the project is funded, it's funded in full, so that you're, you are assured of its, it's a more expeditious completion. The city has successfully received a smart-scale grant in 2016 for what we refer to as the Southern Connector, or Southern Corridor. We received $13.5 million from VDOT through the smart-scale program, or more properly through the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And then, the city's contribution to that project is $2.5 million. And it's to complete a road connection between the terminus of Shenandoah Village Drive to the east, down Oak Lane, across city's industrial property, and then ultimately terminating at South Delphine Avenue. This year, the city staff has prepared four grant applications for the smart-scale project. These are all transportation projects again, and I'll briefly describe them. One would be the Broad Street Access Management Project. Broad Street is obviously a, a, a commercial corridor in the city that was originally constructed as a bypass, a 250 bypass around downtown. And as it stands today, that the, the street tends to suffer from many of the problems that commercial strips of its error did. One is that you have fairly unmanaged access along the roadway, which contributes to safety problems and, and actual accidents along the roadway. That there are five lanes, there's a continuous turn lane. I think maybe the technical term is suicide lane in the business, where, again, creates challenges for navigating the roadway. Along Broad Street as well, there are sidewalks that aren't continuous. Broad Street tends to separate neighborhoods to the north, the Wayne Hills neighborhood, Port Republic Road, some of the basic city neighborhoods, from the downtown area, from the high school and so forth. And so, the idea would be to create a more safe, pedestrian-friendly, and more attractive roadway. And the area we're talking about, this is Broad Street, from its intersection with East Main Street to its intersection with West Main Street out at, this is Rossar. And so, the entire corridor, you know, is proposed to get a, a facelift and to more, perhaps thoughtfully manage access along the roadway. So, what that entails basically is the installation of medians with planting street trees and other plants, landscaping and streetscape along the roadway, the installation of sidewalks where there aren't continuous sidewalks, the consolidation of entrances on some properties, or just a narrowing of entrances. In some cases, you have, you know, continuous curb cuts along a property that makes exiting and entering the property hazardous. And that it continues this theme along the entire corridor. Again, the installation of a, of a landscape median, the installation of continuous sidewalk, pedestrian improvements, and the consolidation or management of access to the roadway. The next project, I think some of you are familiar with, would be the, a proposal to seek grant funding for the Rossar Avenue, 13th Street Roundabout. That, this is a $420,000 project, and it proposes to construct a single-lane roundabout and pedestrian facilities at the intersection of 13th Street and Rossar. And as, you may recall that at one point, the intersection was signalized. The signals were hung and attached to a wooden utility pole that was a Virginia Dominion pole. And the time came that the power company had to replace that pole. The modern installation of signals wouldn't call for this line. They would call for, you know, metal arm for the installation of signals. The pole that the power company was reinstalling wouldn't support these signals in any case. And so, our evaluation led us to believe that it is an appropriate location for a roundabout. And if, I'm sure that some of you are driving through roundabouts now, that as you approach, you have sort of median deflectors that guide people into the roundabout. You make right turns until you reach your exit point and yield to traffic, the traffic entering yields to the left. That the VDOT internal guidance on roundabout evaluation indicates that if analysis shows that a roundabout is a feasible alternative to a signalized intersection, that the roundabout has, is the preferred alternative because of substantial proven safety and operational benefits. And this is something that we discussed in prior council meetings. We had engineers from the McCormick Taylor Group that presented to council and went through why it is that roundabouts are, are proving to be by and, far and away, more safe than typical intersections. And part of it is, one, that there are much fewer potential conflict points in a roundabout, that you reduce the, just the number of different types of accidents that occur. And then, two, that the, the most dangerous accidents, the ones that cause the greatest degree of either property damage or injury, are eliminated. You don't have head-on collisions, you don't have T-bone-type collisions. And then, as well, roundabouts tend to be less expensive over time than maintaining signalized intersections, often less expensive to construct, although this one is about the same in terms of construction cost. And then, finally, that they prove to, to have higher levels of service, that traffic tends to move through more rapidly and efficiently than they do in signalized intersections.
Real quick, are you saying that the VDOT is the one who prefers the roundabout? Or?
No, this is VDOT's internal guidance. If VDOT were evaluating this, this is the guidance that they provide in their evaluation, that this, this roundabout is entirely a city's decision, that we, you know, we're, we are requesting smart-scale money, but we could use our urban maintenance money, or you could use general funds to fund this roundabout, and because we manage our, our own streets and the urban maintenance program here.
Could you put the, the, the intersection exhibit?
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about, I know, I know folks have had some, that I've talked to, and I'm sure others have, had some questions about right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
And impacts to right-of-way on all four corners? Could you, could you speak to each of the four, each of the four corners, please?
The way that the intersection is designed would, the only area that would require additional right-of-way is actually at the corner of the city's own cemetery. That this design was purposefully designed to avoid any type of need for right-of-way from a, a private property owner. So, there is the, sort of a shift right here, that the, currently, the corner of the, the cemetery comes out a little bit more this way. But, you know, on both, both ends of Crompton, the yards would stay exactly as they are. And then, this is the intersection, this, this side of the intersection is where Weitzel's Automotive is. And again, this has been designed to avoid any conflict with any private property owner.
Just as a refresh, when I recall, when we had the engineers here, the, the interior diameter of the roundabout is mountable for emergency vehicles and school buses?
That is correct. That's fairly common, especially with a smaller roundabout, that people have concerns, well, can a fire truck get through? And absolutely, a fire truck can get through at a fairly rapid speed. A, a school bus, a large truck, all of those things can get through. Part of it is that if they're traveling, some of those vehicles at a low enough speed, I'm sorry, would simply travel through the, the same pattern as an automobile. But at a higher speed, they have what's known as a mountable curb. It's a, a curb that's low enough and has a, a gentle slope to it that they can go right over that curb.
That are kind to larger trucks, but not so much passengers.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that in, in a Prius, but, you know, I'd say if you're in a fire truck, you could get over it scooting along.
Great, thank you.
The third project that we want to talk about is an East Main Street, Streetscape project. And we've, we have estimated the cost here of about $1.03 million. As you're well aware, US 250 or East Main Street here in Waynesboro is a primary entrance to the city for traffic that comes from the Skyline Drive, Blue Ridge Parkway, and points east of the, the Blue Ridge Mountain. Currently, we feel like the road is unnecessarily wide. It has 15-foot travel lanes in both directions. Traffic speeds tend to be high, and there are numerous residents along the, the highway there. There are often problems with cars turning into businesses along the corridor, the block traffic, and that causes other cars to travel in, or pass in the bike lanes. So, the, and as well, we feel as if the roadway lacks any of the amenities that you, we would hope for in terms of street trees and pedestrian or bicycle facilities, grade separated. So, the project would start essentially at the Main Street Bridge and head east. And it is a combination of both streetscaping and then what is referred to as road dieting, where you can see that the installation of continuous sidewalks, and then, again, median planters on the roadway. We would allow that there could be parking on the street in this stretch of, of East Main Street from the bridge to its intersection with Broad Street. And then, continuing east, that, again, there, there have already been safe routes to school projects here. But again, a, a lot of what we're doing is landscaping and what is known as road dieting, landscaping at the, the Railroad Bridge. As you cross Delphine, heading up towards the location of the General Virginia Metalcrafters and the, the Basic City Brewery, we would start to transition to a, a separate, grade separated, I'm sorry, grade-separated multi-use path. And that the hope would be that that multi-use path one day would take either a cyclist or pedestrian all the way to the Croze Tunnel. But as I say, a lot of gateway landscaping, a lot of street trees, a lot of streetscaping generally, all the way to the city's boundary. And then, the final application is Rossar Avenue-Ludewitt Connector. This is an $11.9 million project, and it's proposed primarily to, for congestion mitigation and to promote continued economic development growth in the city's west end. That the, this is actually a project that we made application for last year. We weren't successful, but we felt like, you know, it's still a good project. It's one that was conceived in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan as a connector between Rossar Avenue over to Ludewitt. And that we, the way that the program works is every year, communities are putting in their applications, we're being graded, and then the top graded projects are the successful applicants. And we felt like, well, year in, year out, you don't know whether your grade is going to be more competitive relative to the field or less competitive relative to the field. So, we, we felt like it was worth trying again. And again, this is, this is the Avante Nursing Home. The roadway would start just to the east of Avante and travel essentially along Pritzrun Creek, and then come through the edge of the Silver Creek neighborhood and across to the signalized intersection that's there on Ludewitt, kind of near the Zeus Theater. And that would conclude my presentation that, I'm sorry, that the, the, the Rossar-Ludewitt Connector is, proposed as a two-lane facility, and is approximately 4,000 feet in linear length. So, it's, it is conceived really as sort of a local collector or connector street. I'm glad to answer any questions council may have. We've prepared four separate resolutions for the council tonight. We have to vote on each of the proposals by separate resolution.
Any questions, council members?
Is there a prioritization on our part? Or do each of the applications stand on their own and they judge them?
That, I think the way the system works is each application stands on its own, and that they're judged by VDOT. The VDOT staff, you know, takes the lead in actually doing a pre-screening of our applications. And so, over the last several months, we've actually gotten feedback from the department as to their evaluation, sort of the, the strength of the applications, things that we could do to improve the applications. I think if we were pressed, if you said, well, which ones would you, if you could only have three, which would they be? Or if you could only have two, we would go back and, and give some thought to that. But I think part of it is that, you know, there are some of these projects where we've done considerable work in the past, and they seem to be pretty ripe for trying. The roundabout, for instance, is fairly well-engineered. The Ludewitt Connector, we've done quite a bit of work on. East Main Street project, we've done a fair amount of work on. We actually made applications through a, a different program for some of that work, and we weren't successful. So, those are, are ones that have, have been vetted pretty thoroughly here with the local staff. And then, as well, all of them get vetted with VDOT staff before the, the applications are submitted.
Any other questions? I'll just say that, that while I don't score or select or otherwise certainly award VDOT projects, I am an employee of Virginia Department of Transportation, so I'll be abstaining from the, the application portion. But, so, if there are not any questions, are there any resolutions? Are there any motions for the resolution support for the $1.9 million Broad Street Streetscape Project Smart Scale Grant Application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries four and one abstention, Julia. Second, is there a motion for the resolution support of the 42, $420,000 Rossar Avenue and 13th Street Roundabout Smart Scale Grant Application?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. And the next, is there a motion for the resolution support for the $1.03 million East Main Street Streetscape Pro, Streetscape Project Smart Scale Grant Application?
So moved.
Mr. Allen, is there a second?
Second.
I'll sit there. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Four ayes and one abstention, Julia. Is there a motion for the resolution support of the $11.9 million Ludewitt Boulevard-Rossar Avenue Connector Road Smart Scale Grant Application?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson, is, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen, thank you. Is, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Four ayes and one abstention, Julia. Okay. Item number seven is the second consideration and adoption of an ordinance conferring police powers to the deputy fire marshal and considering adopting a resolution. powers to the deputy fire marshal and considering adopting a resolution acknowledging George Fitzgerald IV as a deputy fire marshal with police powers. Mr. Hand.
So, yes, sir. Recalling the ordinance that was introduced at the previous meeting, I would request the council amend that ordinance, deleting language that ascribes, among other responsibilities and duties, emergency management responsibilities to the deputy fire marshal. You're likely aware that we have Department of Emergency Management that is led by the department head, Gary Kreitzer. So in order to eliminate any conflict or, or just to ensure clarity in that regard, the ordinance that you introduced included language about emergency management. This evening, I'm asking the council amend that ordinance, deleting the language about emergency management and assigning those responsibilities to the deputy fire marshal. After you take care of that, of that small piece of business, you'll be asked to adopt the ordinance. And then also, as we anticipate confirmation and prepare Mr. Fitzgerald for some additional training, the trainers at the state level require the locality to formally demonstrate that your deputy fire marshal has been conferred police powers, and that's what the resolution does.
So the first we're going to do is the police powers.
Amend, and then adopt, and then adopt.
Okay. Are there any questions? There any, is there a motion to amend the ordinance introduced July 9?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen, is there any discussion? All in favor of amending the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a sec, and the next is for all...
We just need a second for the ordinance.
Considering, yeah, so... Are we doing the ordinance?
No, I thought we, excuse me.
Okay.
To formally amend the ordinance and then adopt the amended ordinance? Or can you do that with one step?
I thought that's what we did.
Okay, no, no. If we can do that with one step, that's fine by me. So please proceed to the resolution.
Okay. So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging George Fitzgerald IV as the deputy fire marshal with police powers?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, House Senator, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, five oh, thank you. Number eight is to consider approving a revision to the city's retirement benefits eligibility policy to coordinate with the Virginia Retirement System language and align with current administrative practice. Ms. Nicholson.
Good evening, Mayor Short and members of council. This evening, I am here to propose a policy revision to the retirement benefits eligibility policy. The city's current retirement benefits eligibility policy requires revision to align with current city benefits practices and procedures modeled after the Virginia Retirement System's retirement eligibility requirements. The Virginia Retirement Systems, or VRS, has three different retirement plans, Plan One, Plan Two, and the Hybrid Plan. Each VRS plan has its own definition of service retirement. Therefore, the eligibility for continuation of health insurance upon retirement needs to be adjusted to mirror what VRS defines as service retirement. It is being proposed to replace the verbiage in Section 1A that currently reads, "A retiring employee who is participating in the employer's medical plan and who is a service retiree at least 60 years of age and has 10 or more years of continuous full-time service immediately prior to retirement is eligible to participate in the city's group health insurance plan under the cost-sharing terms listed in this policy." With the following, "A retiring employee who is participating in the employer's medical plan and who is a service retiree as defined by the Virginia Retirement System is eligible to participate in the city's group health insurance plan under the cost-sharing terms listed in this policy." Questions?
Any questions? Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve the revision to the policy?
So moved.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So what has actually changed?
So it's, nothing has really changed so much as that, that VRS has three different plans now, and each plan has its own age and years of service and requirements with that. And so it's just a lot easier to make our policy just say, whatever VRS terms as service retirement, that's what we follow.
And is that what, is that what our current status was? So there's no change to that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, great. Oh, we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allen, thank you. Was there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number nine is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating community development block grant proceeds in the amount of $17,487 to the capital projects fund for transfer to the general sewer and stormwater funds to reimburse for expenses associated with the Florence Avenue and Beta Street stormwater projects. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on many of our capital projects or the, the public works projects where we utilize community development block grant funds, what we actually do is have city staff complete the work, and we purchase materials or charge equipment rental to the block grant program. And so this is, these are reimbursement funds that are coming from CDBG to the city, and we're appropriating them back to the appropriate city funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. I believe ordinance is introduced this evening will be carried forward to their, our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Number 10 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $398,510 of general fund unassigned fund balance for transfer to the facility maintenance reserve. Mr. Hand.
So you probably recall that as we worked toward the Waynesboro High School renovation project, the locality or the municipal organization fronted the expense of a number of related activities to the project. Some of that was land acquisition, some of it was architecture and engineering design, some of it was abatement and demolition, anticipating that we would eventually issue debt for the project. We have issued debt, and this ordinance simply allows the municipality to pay itself back from those, for some of those expenses that were fronted for the project.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson. Number 11 is to consider introducing ordinance appropriating a donation in the amount of $8,000 from, from the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge to the Youth and Family Services Fund for needs assessment expenses. Mr. Hand.
I, I think the ordinance is self-explanatory unless there are questions from council.
Any questions? Not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Dr. House Senator, thank you. Next is communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hand.
Evan, item requesting council's consideration on, I'm passing down a resolution that simply confirms that the deputy city manager has the authority in my absence to execute documents in, to the benefit of the city and transact business in that regard, anticipating that there may be occasions when I'm not available to sign documents. I spoke with the city attorney regarding this matter. She says she's confident that the deputy probably inherently has that authority, but this resolution confirms that and eliminates the need for her to research and identify and cite. So if you could adopt that this evening, I would be grateful.
Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make the motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Allen. Anything else?
Can we pause? This is a resolution.
Oh, a resolution, okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second, Dr. House Senator, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Shaw. Weighty responsibility.
Sadist, Mr. Shaw.
Anything else in terms of communication?
No, sir.
Under, okay, thank you. I've been trying really hard to remember all evening to get closer to the microphone. I had a request in the next meeting, so, of course, I'm saying it towards the end of the meeting now, but we have been trying, so we'll try to keep doing better on that. And, okay, the next is citizen comment period. Mr. Hand.
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. And, let's see if we have... Okay, great. Next is, the city manager has requested a closed session to consult with legal counsel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion. I move to, I move to recess into closed meeting in order to consult with legal counsel and to be briefed by staff members, consultants about actual probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating and litigating posture as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. The subject matter of the meeting and the, and the litigation is Waynesboro Water Treatment and Discharge Plant.
Okay, is there, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, thank you. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Portle.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman House Senator?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. Is there a motion that council return to open session and certify that only those items named in the motion were heard or discussed?
I move with respect to the just concluded closed session and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public matters or business matters as defined in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, and considered by the council.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, this motion also requires a roll call. Ms. Portal.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
We are in open session. Is there any other items for discussion?